Yes.
It is now. Thank you.
Chair John Dinen.
Here.
Vice Chair Robert Ball.
Here.
Commissioner Link.
Here.
Commissioner Hughes.
Here.
And Commissioner Fenrich. And just to make note, Joan Stewart is absent.
Thank you, Janet. Any planning commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Hearing none, we'll go to public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the planning commission board. Do we have any public comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission board unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Does any commissioner wish to pull one of these items? Hearing none. Item 2.1, posting of the agenda. The agenda for the October 1st, 2019, special planning commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center bulletin board, City Hall North and South bulletin boards, post office, city website, and email to the library on September 27th, 2019. Item 2.2, approval of the agenda. This provides an opportunity for the planning commissioner's staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Excuse me, John. There is a change to the agenda that the, on page two, on page two of four, the development agreement resolution was moved from fifth to first, and the E I resolution, E I R resolution was removed.
Thank you, Donna. Can I have a motion to approve the revised agenda, excuse me, the consent calendar?
I motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Chair Dinen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
Thank you, Janet. Item 3.1, project location. The residential portion of the Crossroads West specific plan, parent project, closed parent, is located adjacent to the M I D main canal to the north, Oakdale Road to the east, M I D lateral number six to the south, and county parcels to the west towards Coffee Road. The project area is within the Riverbank Sphere of Influence and was approved for annexation by LAFCO on June 26, 2019. An environmental impact report has been prepared by the City of Riverbank as the lead agency over the Crossroads West specific plan. Project description. The proposed project includes development of up to 1,872 low-density residential units, up to 192 medium-density residential units, up to 388 high-density residential units, and up to 27,000 square feet of mixed use, two uses. Additionally, the proposed project would increase the size of the existing 11-acre regional park, the Riverbank Sports Complex, to about 22 acres. A 10- to 12-acre elementary school and 20-acre middle school are also possible within the plan area, as well as a location for a 1.25-acre West Riverbank fire station. The proposed project would provide approximately 42 acres of park, open space, and regional sports park uses. The project includes a request for approval of a development agreement, three tentative maps, two large lot maps, and one small lot map, and preliminary development plans for those maps. Donna, would you like to make your presentation?
Well, it almost seems like we just had you do it. We gave you plenty to read. Well, good evening, planning commissioners and Chair Dinen. As mentioned, this is a special planning commission meeting for the Crossroads West, three tentative parcel maps, and three preliminary development plans, plus the development agreement. This map is the Sphere of Influence map, and you can see on the lower left-hand side the crosshatching, which is the Crossroads West specific plan area. Again, this is a little bit closer look at the project area. As you may recall, at the bottom of that red project area, where you see the canal down to Clarabelle Road, that is the Broman map that has already been reviewed and approved earlier this year. So the actual project site that we're talking about tonight are from, is from the M I D lateral six all the way up to M I D main lateral. There are a few parcels within this project area that are not on these tentative maps and P D Ps. Whoops, too hard. There we go. Here's the specific plan land use diagram. The light-colored yellow is the housing areas, and the dark, the single-family residential housing areas, the dark red are multifamily, and there's a medium density, too, in the yellow, the darker yellow, and then the greens are the proposed locations for parks. There is a parkway proposed north and south that basically parallels Oakdale Road to provide additional circulation for the project. Dang it. You have a heavy finger tonight. Okay, so for the Machado large lot map, this is the area that we are talking about from the canal up to Morel, and from Oakdale Road over to the city limit lines at the county. Here is the large lot tentative map. As you can see, there are 23, 24 large lots that are proposed for residential development. The two cross-hatched lots that are near the bottom, towards the left, are proposed school sites, and there is a smaller parcel halfway down on the left side that is a proposed area for a fire station. But these locations are all subject to negotiations and purchases by those districts. Here's the Machado large lot P D P. It kind of gives you an idea of what sort of circulation and street system you might see in the future.
Can we have, excuse me, do we have any larger copies of these maps? Because we can't see what it says. We know what you say, but we can't do it.
Maybe from the front row, you could see the large one?
Maybe, I'll come up and look. None of us can see where you're talking about.
Does that make it better?
No.
Do we have any more, or that's too small?
Do we have larger maps? Because we can't even cover the streets, and we live here. I don't need to be a problem.
No, no problem.
All right. This is a public hearing. We want you to be able to see what you are going to make comments on.
It's hard to make comments when you can't see. And I realize I'm old, so.
Donna, would this help?
I have, I've got a copy here. That's.
I'll give it back to you, I promise.
Oh, that's fine, you can have it.
Thank you.
Wait, here's the others.
Does that help, ma'am?
Yeah, we just have to get on in.
Does that help?
Thank you very much.
This map is at a different angle than the, the map that I showed you from the specific plan. In this map, Oakdale Road is actually across the top. It looks like the north of the project, and Morel Road is down your left, and the canal is on your right. Oh, we're just going to go too fast here. Right, there we go. Okay. We are also talking tonight, thank you, about the Machado small lot map area. This is just a portion of a larger map that I just showed you, and it's not 100% to scale. The Oakdale Road is on your right there, and then Crawford Road is along the bottom of the crosshatching there. That's not what I wanted. There we go. Here's a copy of the small lot map. There we go. This thing moves too fast. There we go. All right. Here's Oakdale Road right here, and then this is Crawford Road along the bottom, and then this road here is the proposed, possibly called Machado Parkway, the north and south collector. This is a little bit more of a close-up of the Machado small lot P D P. The thing that's being pointed out here, and this larger, this upper portion right here is not part of the approval tonight, it's just shown for reference. So the map is this lower part here, and the reason why this piece here is highlighted is because they also want, not only to have an approval for R1 single-family residential houses, but this pop-out area is a possibility of a senior project if they are approached by a developer who wants to do senior housing. That might be a perfect location for it right there. So this gives them a little bit of flexibility. Then to the north, at the very top of the Crossroads West specific plan, is the Herrigfeld large lot map area. This is Oakdale Road on the right, and this is Morel Road, and then this is the new city limit line, and then M I D main canal. And the sports complex is right here, and these parcels in through here are part of the approval tonight. So here's the Herrigfeld large lot map, and here's the actual area we're looking at today. Here's the sports complex here, the proposed expansion of it, and some other privately-owned parcels right here. So this map, again, goes from here, at the canal, down New City Limits, and back on Morel. Here's the Herrigfeld large lot P D P, preliminary development plan. This is the area suggested for the expansion of the city sports complex right here. This area, this piece here, would be the location of a new city well. And then here's a, just a preliminary look at what the streets could look like within the subdivision. There's actually four large lots right here being proposed with a park in the center. And then just to give you a little bit more perspective, this is the Machados piece over here, and this is a piece possibly for a fire station. The next part of the discussion will involve the development agreement. That's between the, the three different maps and property owners, and I'd like to turn that over to our city attorney, Robin.
Good evening, Commission. So you have before you a development agreement for Crossroads West. It's similar in form to the development agreement you saw five or six months ago for the Broman project. The main difference, obviously, this is predominantly residential. There is a mixed-use designation, a small or mixed-use designation, but it's predominantly a residential project. But if you, if you look at the way the development agreement is, is sort of structured, it's, it's intended to give a vested right to the developers for 20 years. So these maps, if approved, would have a shelf life of 20 years, and the intent is to provide that flexibility with all the investment that's put into this project so that it can sort of ride up and down with the economy and make sure that all the resources that have gone into prepare these plans have an extended shelf life. The, another key purpose of the development agreement is to allocate a financing program for the facilities. So there's a lot of language in here about S D F facilities, and those are the facilities that are reimbursable through the city's citywide fee program. And so there's a lot of language as far as which facilities will be reimbursed through that program. The development agreement also includes what's called a plan area fee concept, and so a plan area fee is a fee that developers within the specific plan, within this area that's covered within the D A, will pay, to pay their fair share of plan area infrastructure. So it's sort of like the impact fee, but on a plan area sort of micro level. There's an exhibit in here which allows an option for the developer to form a C F D to pay for things like some of the, the park costs and things of that nature. So that'll be at the option of the, of the developer whether to, to proceed with a, with a C F D in that context. There is also the obligation to participate in the city's, city, citywide C F D for services. So that's, you know, from a high-level view, the purpose of the development agreement is to make sure that all the public infrastructure required to serve this project is adequately financed. So we have, you know, detailed exhibits outlining those facilities, and a portion of them are allocated to the S D F program, a portion of them are allocated to the plan area fee. Some updating does need to occur within the city, within the S D F program. The city is in the process right now of redoing the parks master plan, and so there's language in the development agreement which allows the city to have some flexibility to adjust those fees once, once the parks master plan is ready for approval, because the parks master plan will lead to a little bit of a different fee profile based on whatever comes out of that plan. The same thing with the, with the sewer fee, the, there's additional capacity is going to be needed for the sewer plant, and so there's going to be a fee update for that. So this development agreement gives the city that flexibility to adjust a few of these fee categories while mostly preserving the fees in place so that the developers know what their fee burden is going to be for this project going forward. So if you have any more specific questions, you want to get into details about any portion of the development agreement, I'm happy to answer them. Just wanted to give you a pretty high-level summary of the components.
Thank you, Robin. I think we'll take this one by one. Item 3.1, subsection 1, is a development agreement, 2018-02, parent number 18-0007, closed parent, resolution number 2019-14. Excuse me, 2019-014. Exhibit A is the draft development agreement that Robin just went over. Exhibit B is the draft city council ordinance, putting this into effect. Any questions from the commission? Hearing none, I'll open this up for public comment. If you have any comments, please come to the podium. Give us your name, your city of residence, and the rules are the same as the beginning, five minutes. Sir?
Thank you, Chairman Dinen, members of the commission. My name is Dave Romano. I'm here this evening on behalf of the project applicants. It's been a long process to get here. We were before you a little while back with the specific plan and the E I R. We appreciate your approval. That's ultimately made it through the LAFCO process, and we're here today with some large lot, a small lot map, and a development agreement. When the specific plan was initially approved, you actually had the large lot map and the development agreement on the Broman property. The residential properties were just a little bit behind, and so we've culminated those discussions with the city manager, the city attorney, and these maps are ready to proceed at this time. I think it's important to understand that the process is that a large lot map will actually allow us to break the property down into what would be bite-sized chunks for the home builders. 10 to 15 acre parcels that could generate about 50 to 75 lots each. And then ultimately, any large lot that is not subdivided today, and only two of them are being subdivided today or proposed for subdivision, will ultimately come back to the commission. So you have a preliminary development plan that gives you an overview, it's consistent with the specific plan, but every time one of those large lot areas is re-subdivided, that's another map, it's a small lot map, it will come to the commission for review, it will go through your staff for analysis. We brought one small lot map forward, that's at the northwest corner of Oakdale Road and Crawford Road. It's the most proximate to utilities. To kick that off, we have some off-site sewer infrastructure in Roselle Avenue, about a mile away from the project, that we have to construct up front. These lots will help us generate revenue to construct that. That's a systems development fee, citywide improvement that there will be reimbursed. So a development agreement addresses those kind of issues, who's responsible and how you get reimbursed. Everything else in these plans are consistent with the specific plan and ready to move forward, and so we're just appreciative of this opportunity to move forward and to keep this project going, to build on the momentum that we've had so far. I do think it's important that we mention one thing. You know, I, I worked on the Crossroads project 25-plus years ago, and when we annexed that, there were questions about Crawford Road. I think there are some neighbors here from Crawford Road. When we came to the planning commission and council, there were some comments and some modifications that were made on behalf of Crawford Road residents, and if there's a question, I just want the commission to understand with respect to it that the specific plan says, and will be imposed on the project, that concurrent with the first development in Phase B, which is the Machado property, a gate will be constructed across Crawford Road near the project's west property line, and an appropriate temporary vehicular turnaround will be constructed on each side of the temporary gate. The Crawford Road connection, though, will be phased in, because ultimately, it's going to be integrated into the Stormdrain Basin Park at its existing alignment, and so as this road gets built in phases, it'll be built pieces at a time. Your staff and you as a commission will always make sure that proper circulation exists, but the Crawford Road access, while we will meet the requirements, may be a certain kind of a gate and turnaround today, and as time goes forward, that will become more elaborate till it's ultimately built into the park in a permanent setting. So we've been committed throughout the process to making sure that those wishes were honored and that, that access points stay closed. At the same time, we have to make sure that fire vehicles can get through it, so it will take some discussion with Fire District, and it will probably have a couple of iterations of what it looks like early in the project and what it looks like at the end of the project as a permanent feature. It's addressed in the specific plan, it's addressed in the development agreement. So I know that's been a regular question, and I just rather than, than waiting, I thought I would address that. I'm here with two of the landowners. They wanted me to let the commission know how appreciative they are of all the help your staff's given them throughout this process. Our engineer is here. If there are any infrastructure-type questions, we'll be happy to answer those for you if anybody has any questions of us. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Any further comments or questions? Entertain a motion to approve item 3.1, subitem 1, the development agreement and the draft city council ordinance.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Janet?
Chair Dinen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
That's approved, 5-0.
Thank you, Janet. Item 3.1, subitem 2, Machado tentative map, 2018-0005, parent large lot, closed parent, and preliminary development plan, 2018-0002, parent number 18-0012, closed parent, resolution 2019-015. Exhibit A is a preliminary development plan, 2018-0002. Exhibit B, tentative map, 2018-0005. Any questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll open up this item for public comments. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Janet?
Chair Dinen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
And that passes 5-0.
Thank you, Janet. Item 3.1, subitem 3, Machado tentative map, 2018-0006, parent small lot, closed parent, and preliminary development plan, 2018-0003, parent 18-0013, closed parent, resolution Exhibit A, preliminary development plan, 2018-0003. Exhibit B, tentative map, 2018-0006. Any questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll open this item up for public comments. Do we have any public comments? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second?
I second.
Janet?
Chair Dinen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
And that again, passes 5-0.
Thank you, Janet. Item 3.1, subitem 4, Herrigfeld tentative map, 2018-0007, parent large lot, closed parent, and preliminary development plan, 2018-0004, parent 18-0014, closed parent, resolution 2019-017. Exhibit A, preliminary development plan, 2018-0004. Exhibit B, tentative map, 2018-0007. Any questions from the commission? Any public comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Janet, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Chair, I mean, excuse me, Chair Dinen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
And that again, passes 5-0.
We have no workshops on the agenda. Any planning commission comments?
I would like to take thanks to staff and our esteemed council for all the wonderful reading material.
Hear, hear. Counter-referral correspondence and information? I am not aware of any. Janet, none? Staff comments?
At the last city council meeting, I brought forth a review of the city's six-month pilot program for mobile food vehicles, food trucks, and we had gotten a lot... program for mobile food vehicles, food trucks, and we had gotten a lot of positive feedback from the community. Therefore, the city council determined that they would like to extend that program an additional 12 months so that people have time to get their projects through the Health Department process and actually up and operating within those 12 months. And staff was directed to work on an amendment to an ordinance to allow these, but they don't want me to work on it right away. They still want to see how the pilot program is working. So, probably within another six to eight months, you may see a draft ordinance come through for your review and possible recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions for Donna?
Any progress on the grant for the small homes or tiny home program?
Yes, I have met with the other planning directors in the cities within Stanislaus County, as well as the county planning director. We are working as a group effort for the second year of the grant. The first year, each city will apply separately for, we're looking at accessory dwelling units as well as tiny houses, the design guidelines for them, a review of fees and possible fee reduction recommendation. And then the second year, we are anticipating collaboratively hiring an architecture firm to create six to eight plans for ADUs and tiny houses, to get the engineering done on them, to have them basically permit-ready. So, when a citizen comes to the counter and wishes to do an accessory dwelling unit or a tiny house on their property, we should have the ordinances in place, and these plans will be available free to the public. It will just require a quick review by planning, the various planning departments for setbacks and any height requirements that cities may decide to have on their own, within their own cities. But basically, we'll have permit-ready plans free to the public. And I will be meeting again with the planning directors this Friday to continue working on our grant application, which is due November 30.
Any other questions for Donna?
Is the October Planning Commission being canceled?
Yes, at this time, we have no project that's ready for the Planning Commission, either with public notice or without.
So, the regular November Planning Commission, meeting on November 19, will be the next one.
Okay.
Conclusion of business? I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone.
Thank you.
Are you moving? Are you moving?
We have an offer on a house, but we're going through inspections. We went through inspections today.